Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for remarks by Councilmember.
Gray.
Gray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to, for those of you, especially those of you who have liquor licenses or are attempting to get liquor licenses today, you all have spent some time with our liquor clerk, Carmen Johnson. I just wanted a moment of silence because her husband passed away this weekend, and I just thought it would be appropriate for this council and those who are in the audience today to take a moment of silence in memory and reflection of Carmen Johnson. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of the business of the council, we ask that you please turn off or silence your electronic devices at this time. Madam Clerk.
Item six, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI-1 district to incorporate into that district, the property located southeast of 10th and Farnum Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item six begins at this time. Are there any proponents? As they say on The Price is Right, come on down.
Lee Myers, 405 South Main Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Very much in favor of the project, but I wanted to comment on how many coordinate with Public Works phrases they are in this agreement. And I wanted to emphasize the 10th, from 10th Street to 8th Street on Harney, that when that was proposed, Public Works wanted curbs. And as we look at our streets in Omaha and balance cars, pedestrians, bikes, and everything else, we're not doing a good job of doing that balance. And I wanted to make sure that this two-block stretch of Harney really is accommodating all uses as well as it incorporates speeding cars. I think if you look at the old market, 11th and Howard, the flat intersection really helps. Nautilus development across the river, they have what, one-half circle or a quarter circle that's flat? And the more flat we can make that street, the more it accommodates pedestrians and other uses. And I just hope in coordinating with Public Works that that remains as friendly to all uses and not just speeding cars. Thanks.
Thank you. Before we continue to the next speaker, council members will probably recognize by now that they don't have their push button in front of them for talking. We were informed just before the start of the meeting that the system is broken down and was sent out for repairs yesterday. So if you wish to speak, just kind of wave and please don't throw anything at me if I miss you, but we'll get you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Do we have anyone who wishes to be recognized? Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Items seven and eight can be considered together for property located at 6405 Center Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item seven, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district in a CC district for this location. Item eight, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
The public hearings on items seven and eight begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
My name is Kyle Hazy with the NA Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Omaha, Nebraska, representing the applicant Access Bank. The piece of property that we are discussing today is on the southwest corner of 64th Avenue and Center Street. It is .3 acres and is the old Amato's Restaurant site. We are requesting a PUR overlay along with the MCC overlay. As you can see, this is the current site as is. The structure, I believe, has been demolished at this time. The proposed project is to put a two-story, 6,800 square foot office building for Access Bank. It'll be a branch location. It will also have, within the facility, meeting room for community events and community gatherings if groups want to meet there. And then we'll have, that building will be placed up against Center Street with a 10-foot trail between that and Center, and then the parking in the rear. Here are some proposed elevations that Access Bank is looking to construct on that site. And with that, I'll make myself available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Harding. Councilmember Harding passed due to a potential conflict of interest. Items seven and eight are approved, six to one, or six to zero, sorry. Item nine, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for the Outpost Bar located at 6301 South 36th Street.
The public hearing on item nine begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. My name's Jim Van Pola, and this is my wife, Jerry. And we just, my dad passed away, and I had the license for 45 years, and we were going to get it switched. We got the papers from Carmen, didn't get it done, he passed away, so we have to get a new license now, so.
Okay. And your address is 6301 South 36th?
Yes, yes, the Outpost Bar.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Item 10, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Goret's Steakhouse located at 4917 Center Street.
The public hearing on item 10 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Jean Dunn, 4917 Center Street.
Jimmy Chan, TKC Go-Rod.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Are you selling the business?
No, we're just changing structure, and I'm going to stay on, and Jimmy has come on so I can spend a little more time raising a seventh grader in California, so.
Good for you.
I'm just going to do a little more traveling.
It's a good time to come on. The parking lot's full most nights.
Yeah. I also want to say something about Carmen. She has made our lives much easier in the liquor industry. She is always helpful, always pleasant. I've never heard her, so I'm really sorry about, to hear about her husband, because I know that must be, obviously, a very tough thing, but she is what makes our liquor business good.
Thanks, Jean.
She makes it easy to put a council through. She gets all the stuff out of the way right away.
Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, seven to zero. Item 11, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Panda House located at 14459 West Center Road.
The public hearing on item 11 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
My name is Leiling Du, Panda House Chinese Restaurant, and the location is 14459 West Center Road, Omaha, Nebraska, 68144.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items 13 and 14 can be considered together for Class D liquor license applications for Mo's Mart Number Five located at 8242 Maple Street and Mo's Mart Number Six located at 720 North 108th Court.
The public hearing on items 13 and 14 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hi, my name is Kamol Samiev. I'm with Mega Saver, 12005 Pacific Street.
My name is Loa Khalikova with the Mega Savers, 12005 Pacific Street, which is opening a new location.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items 13 and 14 can be considered together for Class D liquor license applications for Mo's Mart Number Five located at 8242 Maple Street and Mo's Mart Number Six located at 720 North 108th Court.
The public hearing on items 13 and 14 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hi, my name is Mohamed Tajad, and our location is 720 North 108th Ave. and 8442 Maple Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. We have a couple of questions for you. The first one is, our city law department was a little curious about the corporate structure with essentially the same name as the seller. Is this former owner still going to be involved?
No.
Okay. In terms of this business, will you be the sole owner?
Yes.
Okay. And since you have had the temporary operator's permit, that was issued sometime in October, is that correct?
That's correct.
And have you been collecting the city's occupation taxes for tobacco and for restaurant tax?
Yeah, I have my partner taking care of all that.
Well, that's kind of what the last operator said, but had never paid the tobacco tax or the restaurant tax. So that's why we're asking you in terms of getting a, understanding what your recognition of the laws of the city are and complying with them. So what can you help, what can you say to help us understand your appreciation and respect for the law in that regard?
I'm actually new to all of that, so I didn't know about the city and state difference, so I'll get that taken care of, and we can go from there.
Okay. Do you have an accountant?
Yes.
Bookkeeper?
Yes.
Credit card machine or are you all cash?
We're a credit card machine.
And who's your accountant or bookkeeper?
It's Amra. She's in Houston.
Houston, Texas?
Yeah.
Okay, so the person from Houston may not know our local city rules, so what I'm going to request that you agree here to do as a part of issuing your license, if you'd agree to speak with our city's finance department and Donna Waller in that department so that you can and your accountant can get set up the right way from the beginning so that we don't have those issues with your business moving forward, okay?
That's fine.
And you probably, since you took over about a month ago, you probably may not already realize you've accumulated outstanding
Yeah.
... taxes for tobacco and the restaurant, maybe even the sales tax. So you're agreeable to do that?
I agree.
Okay, so before you leave here today, there's an attorney back there, a well-dressed man in a blue suit with a yellow tie. He'll give you the contact information to get that set up, okay?
Great.
Thank you and good luck. Is there anyone else who wishes to be recognized? Councilmember Harding.
I guess I have a question. So what are we going to do about the taxes that are not only for, since he's been in operation? I mean, I know we have until, I think we can lay this over for a week. I feel more comfortable laying this over. He's got plenty of time to finish the application and make sure that we have the proper taxes collected.
I agree with, that's a good idea. So there'll be a one-week layover before we take action on your application, but what I learned before the meeting, just before we came in from Mr. Wiesen in our city law department, is that there is no judgment against the current licensee, which for anything that accrued before his temporary operator permit commenced a few weeks ago would be something that the city, if we were to seek collection, would have to go against that business entity and not this person.
Okay. I understand that, but also by self-admission, he has said that he doesn't think anything's been paid since he's had his temporary operating permit, so I would, again, I'd feel more comfortable laying this over for a week and make sure that that's collected or at least have the process set up so that it can be collected.
That's a good idea. So that's a motion.
Yeah, that's a motion.
And there was a second, and as a part of what you're to use the week delay in this continuance to do is you're going to get the contact information from Mr. Wiesen back there, you're going to meet with or speak with our finance department to get set up in the system to make sure you're properly collecting and remitting those taxes, okay?
Okay.
Thanks. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
We'll see you next week.
Item 15, to consider an addition application for Report &amp; Pub's Class C liquor license located at 12100 West Center Road, Suite 204, to add an area approximately 20 feet by 30 feet to the east.
The public hearing on item 15 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hi, I'm Helen Obrash from the Report Inn, 12100 West Center Road, Suite 204.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 15 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any members of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items 16 and 17 were held on November 5, 2019. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 18 through 54 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent.
Mark Von Drosick, 555 South 34th Street. I'd like to address agenda item number 40. I know the Salvation Army has a very good reputation in the city of Omaha and among the leaders of the city of Omaha. However, their abuse and mistreatment of queer people and specifically of transgender people is well documented. I'm unsure that it's constitutional for any government, including this city, to give money to an organization whose religious beliefs do not require them to discriminate, but in practice end up discriminating against queer and transgender people every day across this country. They've turned transgender people and queer people away from homeless services. They've kicked people out of their services once they figured out they were queer, and they also discriminate against people who will not accept their religious message upon entering the program. They also kick people out of their program if they espouse disbelief in God or in religion in general. So I do not approve of this disbursement of money to the Salvation Army, and I would like to hear any comments on the constitutionality of providing government money to such a religious organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others who wish to testify on the consent agenda resolutions?
Chair members of council, Troy Anderson, serving as executive director at Omaha Municipal Bank. Item number 35 proponent. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. We have Mr. Harding first. Oh. Public hearing was closed, Mr. Jimenez. I'm going to call you up when it's my turn. Mr. Harding.
I just wanted to make a comment on item number 54, which is the reappointment of Craig Rosenbaum to the planning board. Craig's been a tremendous asset to that board, and as you know, everything but a conditional use permit on the planning board ends up on our agenda, and I think he currently serves as the chairman of that board, and I think we're all very fortunate to have someone of his caliber be interested in serving again in that capacity.
Thank you. Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to acknowledge that there are, along with these resolutions, there are a couple of people in the audience today that, you know, I would at least like to say thank you to because they give, we give them resources, and they have used those resources so magnificently that I think it merits, you know, at least a recognition of them. So Tom Warren and all of the individuals that are involved with addressing the needs of students to get, and to make sure that they stay in school, that's been a tremendous effort, and my hat is off to the Urban League and others who have made that work. Also Judith Hill is here in the audience as well to address who's part of U-Turn. If you want to come up and say something, you certainly can, but, you know, I just wanted to acknowledge the valuable work that you all do, and the amount of resources that we give you are well-used. I know you could use a lot more, all of you, but the fact of the matter is, is that with the resources that you have, you do a tremendous amount of work, and I just wanted to say thank you for the work that you do.
I have a bad knee, so if you don't mind, I would like to introduce our new executive director, Mr. Teresa Negron.
Oh, my goodness, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Negron, thank you much for your involvement in U-Turn, and with you involved, I know there's going to be some good things to come. So thank you all. I appreciate it, and I just wanted to take the opportunity, we had a couple in the audience, so I wanted to make sure they recognized that this council is, we recognize the importance of your work and we recognize how well you have done that work with the resources we've given you.
Thank you. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I would just add a similar comment and repeat that nobody needs to come up to address all these particular contracts because there's a lot of them, but essentially items number 39 through 53 reflect what we've already budgeted in the city budget, and so this is the execution of that, of those allocations with contracts. But these are our community partners that help us address things like truancy and violence prevention and tree planting and housing and homelessness and job training, so all very valuable things that I think are consistent with our mission to address community needs and poverty throughout our city that I think is, and workforce development that I think are very important things for us to be doing. So I appreciate all their work as well, and I would move to approve.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton.
Thank you. And I just wanted to address number 22 and 23 in regards to the snow, sidewalk snow removal contracts that last year were, you know, a couple hundred people were faced with some very hefty fines for failure to remove snow from their sidewalks. And I just want to reiterate with Public Works, Mr. Stube, what is the city going to do to notify people when the 24-hour period stops? I know the policy is it's 24 hours from when the snow ends, but the city, it's my understanding, is at least going to try and make some kind of public, we're going to put it on the website and let people know when that 24 hours begins. Is that correct?
Bob Stube, Public Works. So yes, within the city code, it says that when street maintenance operations are complete, essentially is when kind of the clock starts ticking from the standpoint of citizens having the responsibility to remove their snow within 24 hours after that ending period for street maintenance. So yes, we will make an effort to communicate with the public to at least let them know that that's when the clock starts ticking.
Where can I go in case, you know, I wasn't paying attention to when the snow, when it stopped, or maybe I was out of town? Where would I go to find that information so that I know when my 24 hours start?
Well, I don't know if we've actually formalized it yet, but obviously we have things such as Twitter, and we have other types of social media, we have the city's website, so those types of efforts with something else that we can coordinate through the mayor's office also with regard to making sure that there's enough avenues of getting that information out to the public.
I mean, I think it'd be helpful, I would appreciate it if the news stations would help us out with that, and at least if we could notify them, perhaps they could maybe at least make a little announcement on the news, but I definitely, at a minimum, we don't have a lot of time, and I mean, we could have a snowstorm next week potentially.
Correct.
But, so I think we need to actually have a place, it'll be on the Public Works website, on the mayor's website, and I understand there's Twitter and Facebook, but not everybody uses all that social media.
We do have a distribution list that we use for like closing streets and things like that. I think that's another resource that we potentially could use to essentially notify those individuals such as the World Herald and the other media outlets with regard to that closure as far as when we complete our operations.
Okay, because I think that would be very helpful. And the other thing that, and I said it last year, but I'm going to say it again, this is a complaint-based system. So the city isn't out with inspectors calling in sidewalks. This is usually neighbors calling about neighbors who haven't pawed their sidewalks. I would really encourage people, if your neighbor's sidewalk did not get shoveled, I would encourage you to maybe go to your neighbor's house first, see if they're sick, if they're in the hospital, see if, you know, maybe there's a teenage boy across the street, you know, those 12, 13, 14-year-old boys instead of sitting inside playing video games, maybe they could come out and shovel the snow, or they're not old enough to work, and I got one of those in my own house. So, you know, I would just encourage people to, maybe before you make the city the first call, check on your neighbor. I mean, we are a nice city, and just see if maybe your neighbor needs a little help because although the cost of these contracts are a lot less than last year, it's still a pretty hefty price tag, especially if we get, you know, six inches of snow, it's going to be $4.60 a square foot. If we get over 12 inches, if we get a foot of snow, it's going to be $6.96. And it's a lot harder to go and shovel these sidewalks, you know, after four or five days. Once the ice has set in and you've got all that, it makes it a little more difficult. So I guess I would just encourage people to check on your neighbors because otherwise they may be faced, again, with, would be, let's just say it'd be a lot cheaper to hire someone, even cheaper to hire your next-door neighbor's kid. So let's just keep that in mind this year, and hopefully we won't have a couple hundred people coming to the Bordeaux in the spring with hefty payments for snow removal. So, thank you.
Thank you. There's also another program through the Eastern Nebraska Office on Aging for elderly citizens who can apply for assistance for shoveling their walks in the driveway through that agency, and the number is 402-444-6558 if you're interested in inquiring about that or know someone or family member or neighbor who is elderly and cannot shovel who is elderly and cannot shovel their own walk. We had one citizen who I said I'd recognize. Mr. Jimenez, you're recognized for one minute.
Thanks for the opportunity. I didn't expect to speak. My name is Luis Jimenez, twenty-two oh five North Twenty-Fourth Street. I just want to comment on forty, item forty, because it seems like there isn't any particulars that Mr. Van Drossick can point to. My experience with dealing Salvation Army has been professional and about serving the individuals. I was treated nicely, cool going in there. Families are benefiting from their services. So if there are things to address, I think that there are professionals dealing with the city that can provide protection and also a human experience, I suppose I could say. But I just wanted to respond to what Mr. Van Drossick said. I think that not funding the organization, for whatever reason, it's not a good idea. Maybe there's an investigation.
Thank you. And there is, of course, subject to, the city code, any contractor with the city agrees in the written contract to comply with the city's equal opportunity and employment ordinance, which prohibits discrimination based upon gender identity or sexual preference. So with that, there was a motion and there was a second. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Eighteen through fifty-four are approved, seven to zero. Item fifty-five, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Chapter Twelve, Article Seven, entitled Retail Sales of Tobacco Products, to remove an exemption for nicotine delivery devices from the tax imposed by this article. A is communications and support. B is an amendment of the whole requested by Council President Jaram. C is documentation submitted by the law department.
This was laid over from our October twenty-nine, two thousand and nineteen meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the amendment of the whole.
Second.
Go ahead. You were first.
I was first?
You were first.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to amend the amendment of the whole, the strike line twenty on page six, letter E. The occupation tax imposed by the, by this section shall terminate on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll second that. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Well, I just wanted, I just wanted to thank you for eliminating the lozenges and the patches, things that are recognized as smoking cessation products according to the FDA. I think that's important, that we don't want to discourage people. And there's a lot of people that sell those and only those products and not anything that we're addressing. So I appreciate the efforts in making that happen.
And I appreciate the suggestion on your part and the Herculean effort almost of the law department to get this done, notwithstanding having to be in court all, for several times between when we last discussed this and now. Ryan Weezin and the City Law Department got that done and actually said he thought it made the ordinance stronger and better. So.
Well, yeah, and maybe a little thanks can go out to Ryan. You've been juggling a lot of ordinances in this last week. We appreciate all your efforts. So, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you. Roll call.
This is on the amendment.
Right.
Okay. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Is there a second?
We have a motion and a second.
Okay.
For, okay.
Omni as amended, amendment of the whole. So the amendment of the whole has been moved and seconded and the clerk is advising since it's been amended, it's now subject to vote.
Yes. The vote would be on the amendment of the whole as amended.
Can I, can I clear, motion just for clarification, is this removing the sunset on the entire ordinance?
Correct.
And so it, we won't have a, there is no sunset on it to vote against?
If the amendment of the whole as amended passes, the sunset goes away. Yes, Mr. Pauls?
I will vote for that. I've been through like, four or five years in the legislature trying to set sunsets, so then we'd always have to revisit that in the future. That's one of the reasons why I'm for sunsets, because you have to talk about it again. By eliminate that, this is a done deal. And I, this I will, not opposed, but to me, sunsets have value because it causes us to rethink those downline and different council members. I understand what you're going for on this because of what it is.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just, I wish that we would have known about it before, before now for time to discuss, but.
I think, I think when we first had the public hearing, Mr. Gray said he was thinking about that. He just got this today, I think. So, roll call. Yeah, on the amendment of the whole as amended.
Correct. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
No.
Melton.
No.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one. Item fifty-six, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code to prohibit parking in bicycle lanes, marked travel lanes of multi-lane roadways, and set the penalty amount for violation of these prohibitions.
The public hearing on item fifty-seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents? And before you come down, we'll have the Public Works Department give their information if they wish to.
Todd Pitzer and Jeff Reeselman from Public Works, just here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak as a proponent on this item? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. This is a pretty straightforward change in city code that just recognizes a situation I encountered initially in my district, but I think it has occurred in other places across the city too where, where we do have bike lanes and it's not entirely clear where folks can or cannot park in adjoining properties or areas where they choose to. And so in my particular situation, ours was just resolved by working together. And it was not a problem in terms of getting that accomplished with some additional clarification. But it became clear to us that nowhere in the city code did we define bike lanes. And so this small change, working with the Public Works Department to analyze it and through the Public Works Committee, would make it clear that parking is no longer allowed within designated bike lanes throughout the city as we seek to improve our pedestrian and bike lane experience throughout the city. Jeff, if you would, just for a second? There's also a second part of the ordinance that just applies to a similar traveling lane, which is a car lane, and clarifies that no one can park in an active car lane or multi-use lane as well. Can you talk about that one too?
Yeah. Jeffrey Swin, Public Works, Traffic. In going through the ordinance with respect to the bike lanes, there's a section for obstructions. And we noticed that in addition to there not being any language with respect to bike lanes, there was also not any language with respect to multi-lane roadways. So we wanted to make it an option for enforcement of parking in travel lanes. And that's what the multi-lane portion of the ordinance is for.
Which also seems pretty self-evident, but just didn't exist anywhere else in code, right?
Correct. So the few people that I've talked to about it were actually surprised that it wasn't already in the code. So this is basically just like a, you know, a cleanup to get something that would seem obvious to prevent, but making sure that there's actually language in there specific to those situations.
My only question when you suggested it was to make sure that, you know, I'm envisioning our neighborhood business districts where there is sometimes cars parked in lanes to do drop-offs when there's no other ability to do that, or the alleyway is too narrow or what have you. So just to confirm, that would not apply to that kind of situation that's temporarily parked to do something like that, right?
Correct. It would be at the discretion of a law enforcement officer. Right now there wouldn't be any ability to even prosecute a situation. But it would be up to the discretion of enforcement for certain situations such as they stay too long in the parking lane, say five hours, or if there's roadwork going on that's restricted a couple lanes and there's only one lane available and they take that lane. Now we have the language in the ordinance to, to address the situation.
Great. Thank you. So I think overall, this is a good addition to our code. I think it does clarify for bike riders and provides a lot of safety for both bike riders and those that park to coexist and clarifies the rule of the road in that respect. So I look forward to supporting this next week and appreciate your work on it.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
I have a question. If I park my car in that, in that lane and I get a ticket, what would that, do you have any idea what that would cost me?
That was in the code.
Okay, thirty-two. Is that the same cost if I ride my scooter on the streets? Is it same cost, or on the sidewalks? Because-
I don't know. I don't know the answer to the, the cost of that ticket.
Okay. It seems to me that what's good for one is good for the other. Because when I see the World Herald, I see they're talking about scooters and they have three or four people going down the sidewalk on the scooter. So, but there is a ticket to that, I'm assuming. I'm not asking you for the exact-
Right. I do know that the police have issued tickets with respect to riding on sidewalks.
If I may comment, councilman, we are, that scooter program just ended last week. So we are in the process of putting forth that date. And I've spoken with OPD about a number of their concerns. And I've also spoken with our law department reflecting that. So I think it's the city's desire to make some modifications to the code and figure out how we want the scooters to look and some of those things. So certainly if there's input from the council on that, I would welcome that through Public Works and we'll pass that along and try to get that included.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Before we proceed to the next item, there's been notice that on item fifty-five, on the vote on the amended amendment of the whole, Councilmember Harding's vote had been intended to be no. And I would instruct the clerk to correct the record in that regard and ask unanimous consent to allow her to do that. And without objection, that'll be ordered. Next item.
Item fifty-seven, an ordinance vacating the portion of the north Forty-Ninth Street right-of-way.
The public hearing on item fifty-eight begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Oh, fifty-seven? Fifty-seven, I'm sorry. Public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-eight, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Region Six Behavioral Health Care in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars and authorize funding for such agreement from the City of Omaha's Fiscal Year 2018 Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program Grant.
The public hearing on item fifty-eight begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-nine, an ordinance to approve an authorized disbursement from the Fiscal Year 2019 State Homeland Security Grant Award to provide first responder and emergency management agencies in Douglas, Sarpy, and Washington Counties.
The public hearing on item fifty-nine begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item sixty, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code to establish the salary for the mayor of the City of Omaha for the years 2023 through 2026.
Before we begin the public hearing on this item, we would just let the public know if you came to testify today on this public hearing, you're certainly free to. We anticipate it will be a motion to lay over to the next meeting. And you'll, and to continue the public hearings, you'll have an opportunity to do so then as well. But if you came down to testify here today, if there are any proponents, please come forward. Did you wish to speak as a proponent?
Proponent?
Proponent, yes.
We see minus twenty-two oh five North Twenty-Fourth Street. I am in support. However, I just want to point out some details on this, that it is for a few years. And I think it's a teaching moment that people should be valued and compensated for services rendered. Maybe the council and the legislator can learn from this that people need to get paid. And I'm afraid to say that I think you are overworked and underpaid. So I think this could be a teaching moment. But I think the mayor should get more money. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any, did you wish to speak, Mr. Kagan?
Oh.
Okay. Opponents. We'll now call opponents. Those are opposed to this proposal.
Good afternoon. Doug Kagan, four sixteen South One Hundred Thirty-First Street, representing Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. Although we can see that our mayor and city council members do work at their jobs diligently, our organization opposes both pay raise ordinances. The routine of pegging mayoral and city council salaries to those of other cities ignores the cost of living differences among various regions and leads to a syndrome whereby cities try to match other cities with higher public salaries, leading to a comparability that accelerates in a spiraling race to the top for salaries. Also, we question setting these, setting these salaries too far into the future because we have no idea what the economy or inflation rate will be far into the future. We have no knowledge of how many more, how many fewer, or how different will be mayoral or city council official responsibilities in the years to come. Having said the above, as an alternative, we suggest that the city council accept and vote for amendments to be proposed by council members Melton and Harding, set the annual increase in the Midwest Urban Consumer Price Index. This option would tie these salaries to one state-of-the-economy factor and help deflate the cost to taxpayers when salaries race to catch each other in an ever-higher spiral. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one three two. I understand that we have a chief executive in Omaha called the mayor, and she presides sort of speak over the city council also. I'm opposed to a raise for the mayor right now because I think there's a lot of unsettled issues that are gonna swelter. And I don't think we need to promise a pay raise for the person in the future. Number one, because most of them already have salaries anyway, working for somebody else. So they're sort of double-dipping. And it's getting very hard for me to pay my property taxes anymore. One of the reasons I'm against it is there's been an awful lot of use of the city council for proclamations about disparity and racism. And I don't think that's what our city needs to be listening to all the time. It's, it seems to be constant. And I don't think taxpayers need to be exposed to that all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Melton.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to state, one of the reasons that the amendments didn't make it for today is we have asked law to look into using kind of the COLA, you know, the Cost of Living Index. And it seems that there, we're making sure that we can do that per law. Whether that's gonna be acceptable, I certainly wouldn't want to put anything in front of the council that would cause us to be in violation of the Nebraska Constitution. So the, we're still looking at that. The other amendment that I was attempting to make is to set the, and when I say the mayor's salary, it would be the person who is mayor in 2022. So we're not changing any current salaries or for anybody's current term. Again, the amendments or the ordinance that's in place right now is for the next term, which we are actually required to do right now by city charter. So this council sets the salary for the next council. You can't wait. And we can't set a salary for ourselves. So what we're doing now is what's required by city charter. However, what's not required is I would like to see the mayor of the City of Omaha make a salary that's at least a median salary for cities of like size, which our staff has done the research on that. One twenty-two puts our mayor, the mayor of Omaha, at that median income. And I understand that Mayor Stothard voluntarily took a ten percent reduction when she started for those four years. It never went back up. And I'm not so sure whoever the next mayor may be, whether it be Mayor Jean Stothard or somebody sitting at this council table with me or somebody else. I think that we should bring it back up. And in doing that, it should be a median. So we're not at the top, but certainly I don't want to see Omaha at the bottom. I do think we're a thriving city. And mayors may have jobs when, other jobs when they get elected. But when you're elected as mayor, it's, it's not only a full-time job. You're working seven days a week, twelve to fourteen hours a day. I can't tell you how many times I see Mayor Stothard. Evening events, weekend events, and it won't be any different for the next mayor. They can't work another job. So I do think that it would be appropriate to do that and do it now before the next term.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Festerson. Or was it Gray? Gray, I'm sorry. I saw the wrong hand go.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, I think as Mr. Jimenez talked about, this is an opportunity, this is one of those opportunities for a teaching- is one of those opportunities for a teachable moment, and Councilmember Melton started us off talking about the fact that we have to do this in this cycle so that this is for the next city council, whoever that might be, and we're obligated by city charter to do that. The other thing I wanted to add was based on comments from Mr. Kagan, I want to remind people that this council, when we were elected, it was in the middle of that downturn, and this council and the mayor at that time, we engaged in right away a four-year wage freeze. So, I want people to remember that, that those things did happen, and this, this council was responsive, and, and they initiated a four-year wage freeze for both council and mayor. So, I wanted people to remind people of that.
And, and some of us, when there was a pay increase, wrote a check back to the city treasury, almost a thousand dollars a year for a few years.
Yes.
You know, and one more thing, because I, I was more comfortable doing this now after we agreed with Semtech that we are doing actually salary studies for everybody that works for the City of Omaha. I wouldn't have been comfortable to actually doing this until we had made that commitment. So, part of that commitment is we're making sure that everybody who works for the city go from the mayor's office all, all the way through all positions, including, you know, the, the men and women that are working hard, shoveling, shoveling our roads and filling our potholes. We want to make sure that everyone that works for the city, we're doing a salary study to make sure that we can recruit and keep good people, but that the, the wage is fair based upon what other people are making too. So, I think based on those efforts as well, you know, I, I am comfortable making this move.
Thank you. Councilmember Harding.
I just wanted to also weigh in a little bit on this, the idea of the Cost of Living Adjustment rather than the three percent, and I think it was something that, when, when I thought about it, or when we were discussing it and having the discussion of if you have automatic three percent bumps, and, and in my industry in commercial real estate, we typically see percentage increases year over year, and, and I think as Mr. Kagan said, you can see that upward spiral artificially go, continue to rise. So, that's why I, I thought it made more sense to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, to look at a, an index that we could base that it, it could go up, it could go down. So, it was, it was something that could remain flexible, yet be cognizant of, of the taxpayers' dollars that, that we're spending.
Thank you. My own view on this would be that we pass a simple, concise, consensus-oriented ordinance structure for both the mayor and the council, whether that's three percent or something less or south of that, that's fine with me. It's easy for the, the taxpayer to, to know what we're being paid, to say, okay, here's the salary times three percent, it's this amount, so this year, it'll be this amount. When you get into these indices, I don't know whether they're legal or not either. We'll have to wait and see if we can do that from, I think Mr. Weezin's on that project too, so have a nice Thanksgiving. But we'll find out. But I, I just like the idea of the, of the simplicity of the existing structure. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I wasn't really intending to speak, but Councilman Gray made me think of some things I, I thought I might add, because that is what occurred in previous years, is whenever the city was having a difficult time, or there were unusual labor negotiations happening, the council at the time reflected that, and either froze our own salaries if our city employees had their, their salaries frozen, or in some cases, just wrote checks back to the city. So, we had, we would have no increase, and I was one of those councilmembers too. So, in my mind, I think proposed increases should reflect the same increase other city employees have received or not received. And so, for that reason, I've never supported anything more than a three percent increase, and that's what most city employees have now negotiated this year for several years going forward in our labor agreements. So, I think I too would prefer that approach that is more simple and more consistent with past practice. I'm a little, I'm a little confused by Mr. Kagan's testimony on that. I think he started by saying he would oppose the method of analyzing other cities and going with the median aspect of those cities because your observation was, you think that leads, you know, to inflated, inflated salaries. But I think that's exactly what the other one proposes to do, and that's a legitimate approach, but I'm just saying that by, by increasing the mayor's salary immediately to reflect that median salary, that's doing exactly what you said you opposed, but I think you're saying you favor that. So, I'm just pointing out that your testimony confused me a little bit, but all that aside, I prefer the standard approach we've gone with in the past, which is only a three percent approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Because I know we're gonna talk about this again next week, but as it relates to the three percent or a, a set amount versus tying it to an index, I think there are not always those situations where those three percent bumps are built in, and, and I would tell you that would take away in part maybe the ability to effectively negotiate going forward, because if you have set in stone for the mayor, for example, to say it's a three percent bump, why then would any labor union or negotiating body say, you know, I, I deserve three percent. If it's good enough for the mayor, it should be good enough for me. So, I, that's why I thought it was, it was an idea to tie it to an index rather than an automatic bump.
Well, I liked the conversation. I, I, it's good, and as I was asked recently, I don't know anyone on this council that got in this for the money. I've never heard that in, in ten years on this body, and, and several of us have other jobs because we have to have other jobs, and, and this is for public service. I think we generally, not tapping myself on the back or anyone here, but generally, people are in this for the right reasons. So, conversations like this are healthy, citizen input's healthy, and in the end, I'm sure we'll, we'll come up with a reasonable solution. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I just want, because I had forgotten all about this. Refresh me, some of you paid back your, the city because of a rate increase you got.
We donated it back.
Donated it back. And also, we froze our salary?
Yeah.
So, so for those people out there thinking that we're just willy-tilly doing this stuff, I mean, we freeze our own salaries and some people gave back. I mean, let's, let's be real, because I do, I, I truly believe the mayor needs more than even the amount of money that we are suggesting, because I look around in the business world, I look around in the other groups, as I said earlier, or in the past, super tentative, OPS, OPPD, I mean, five times the amount of money yours, and you're, you're telling me that this is, we're getting out of hand here. I just, I really find that ironic. We ought to take a look at the other areas. And also saying the business world, my friends in the business world, you say, oh gee, you give them a, a three percent increase, but you forget, you, to think of all of the bonuses that are handed out, which are not handed out at the government level. There are ways in the business world that you can reward people, and it's commonly accepted. I mean, if not, take a look at the salaries of some of the large CEOs. I mean, it's almost scary. So, anyway, getting back to this, I do, I'm gonna support giving, making sure the mayor, if not this mayor, the next mayor, because maybe we want people to take these positions who do not have a lot of money, but if it's a decent salary, they may strive for that. Get away from this idea that you have to be a person of means to do some of those positions. If, just think about that. If you're getting a hundred twenty thousand a year, I think we're eliminating some of the good people who are not making that amount of money. I, I think they're out there, we just don't see them, because most of the time, take a look at the past few mayors, and you can see that they've had some pretty good lives. I know our, our mayor, she, she did not have, I mean, she was a nurse in her past, and she did do a lot of what I call free years for the middle of public schools on that school board. But I think we need to think, make sure this does not end up being a, a job for the people who have money already. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
We, this is, there are gonna be a motion in a second to continue the public hearing to the third reading.
I'll do a motion to continue public hearing.
To the third reading next week.
Roll call.
Palermo.
This is on sixty and sixty-one.
Just sixty.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
I'll motion to continue the public hearing on sixty-one.
Okay, we're gonna, is there a second? I'll call the public hearing still.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Now, we'll open up the public hearing on item sixty-one as soon as Madam Clerk reads it.
Okay. Item sixty-one, an ordinance to amend Omaha municipal code to establish the salary for council members of the City of Omaha for the years 2023 through 2026.
Public hearing on item sixty-one begins at this time, just like the last item, we, there's been a motion to continue the public hearing until the, the third reading, which is next Tuesday. But anyone who came here today who wishes to testify may do so, and I would call the proponents at this time.
Louis Hemanis, twenty-two oh five North Twenty-Fourth Street. This is what I was talking about, but maybe, I think, three percent or anything that doesn't compensate you more than like ten percent, twenty percent is what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha. I'm sort of speaking for the same reason I spoke earlier about the mayor. I think the city council has unresolved a number of major things in Omaha, and they don't deserve to give somebody else a break that's not in office yet. One of the major issues is whether we're a democracy or a republic, and I think that needs to get clarified by people that we elect. They do take an oath to that effect, and as I've stated before, we do swear that, and every day we have a meeting here. So, we don't need to come back with the opening statement about our democracy. That, the two terms are opposite of each other. Please look that up in the dictionary and change some of that wording in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? The public hearing is closed. There's been a motion and a second. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Non-action items, items sixty-two through ninety-eight do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Please note, the city council will not meet on December three, December twenty-four, and December thirty-one. Is there a motion to adjourn? Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Melton.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at three oh two.